today I go over the handouts in the class it is currently July 7th so we have quite a few handouts to go through I'll be going over some of the review along with some of the rules and some example questions from the assignments so first let's start with the review first we need to define causal explanations what a causal explanation is is an answer to a how or why question identifying a cause for an effect second an inference involves deriving a conclusion from some evidence please note that the evidence does not actually need to be good evidence you can infer using bad evidence and also studios please give your characters eyes like Aria here and of course explanation slash inference hybrids these have three distinct sections choose A let me silence my cellphone here I think I got it yes it is now silent A is a prediction we infer a future effect from the cause please note that it does not necessarily have to be a future effect but it should be in future tense when written B inference to the best explanation we infer the cause from an observed effect and C uh causal mechanisms we fill in the gap between a cause so could be A and an effect C by positing an intermediate cause link which is B through which A causes C that's going to sound a little bit confusing however once I get through explaining it it's going to make a lot more sense and finally structured paragraphs so the way we get these is A we identify the different claims then we drop the connectives and C we separate the main points from the claims that are comments on them and from there what we do is put down the main points and secondary points if applicable so there aren't always secondary points indented under them so far so good great because now that we're here we have step five which is to determine the relation between the secondary and main points okay so those are the steps to get a structured paraphrase to find the rules for a structured paraphrase look where it says labels and I know it's a bit sloppy the handwriting but trust me it'll fix it all up so let's look at some examples let's look uh this one here I'll leave these here say Nooni is staring at me because he is hungry so now that we have that claim how do we separate it we got separated into two claims so Nooni is staring at me and the other claim is he is hungry okay now the connector word in this statement is the word because and because indicates an explanation infobit number two is he is hungry and infobit one is Nooni is staring at me because it is an explanation we know that two causes one as you can see in the label section over here it says I just realized I'm not recording my mouse it says that the cause here does is one of the two possible outcomes you get a cause or effect but in this case statement two is causing statement one therefore this is the the cause so the way we would put this in a structured paraphrase is Nooni is staring at me and then from here we would put a little indent and write cause and that's how you do a structured paraphrase of the state of sentence Nooni is staring at me because he is hungry makes sense at least I like to think it makes sense but however and this is where this can become a really hard concept if you're not paying attention we have the main point of what if instead of saying because Nooni is staring at me so we replace this and say comma he must be hungry now we have a different situation because must be the word must be is a reason therefore inference it would have to be either either a an evidence or a conclusion well he must be hungry he is we are concluding that Nooni must be so this is a conclusion but wait you see the second the second info bit you know he must be hungry still is explaining a cause therefore you can have a second one saying something along the lines of this uh conclusion cause he is hungry and that's how you would structure that paraphrase good I know it's a bit confusing but trust me we'll get through this now this is one that's also kind of interesting I think I should feed Nooni he is hungry okay that's that however what this does is it actually completely changes the statement so the two statements are I should feed Nooni and the other statement is he is hungry so it actually only changes one of the connect one info bit the top info bit the bottom info bit stays relatively the same excellent good however I think I should is an inference but what kind of inference is it well he is hungry is the evidence to tell you that you should feed Nooni therefore it is evidence I should feed Nooni evidence he is hungry awesome I know that this is a bit of a confusing section but we gotta practice this otherwise we're not gonna pass the exam up next we have a new one Maria was late as there was heavy traffic on the highway so now we need to separate him the two claims are Maria was late and the second claim is there was heavy traffic on the highway so here's the sitch be the term was late as as is your connector okay so something happened okay so so and so was slow as he didn't sleep well last night what is that the didn't sleep well last night or in this case there was heavy traffic on the highway is the cause okay therefore that is your structured paraphrase Maria was late there was heavy traffic on the highway that's a cause and the reason we know this is because it is an explanation it is trying to explain to you why Maria was late because in in theory the effect was Maria was late but since it's the first conclusion of the structure paraphrase well not the first conclusion it's the first info bit we don't use it as evidence okay it's Maria was late cause there was heavy traffic in the highway I'm not too sure as to why the indenting is so important but calling the professor that's just the way you do it however now let's rephrase this sentence again because you see a lot of them look inconspicuously similar however what if we do this Maria will be late because there was heavy traffic on the highway okay what if that's our sentence well then we need to have two statements uh infobit one is Maria will be late and the second info bit is there is heavy traffic on the highway I I know there's a second part of where it says heavy traffic on the highway this morning but this morning is not one hundred percent required I guess I'll write it down and by the way that fan in the background yeah I'm not even kidding that's the laptop fan there is heavy traffic on the highway okay so we know from the previous one that because is the explanation however when you have because 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 of the way because language is able to be is able to completely change the way we interpret it we can't rely on the because in reality you will rely on the will be now will be oddly enough we're inferring something based on evidence in the statement there is there there is heavy traffic on the highway this morning at the same time we're explaining something that the reason Maria is late is because there will be heavy traffic in the morning therefore therefore when you do this it'll be ex planation I mean explanation we go from explanation then we have to go cause or effect in this case is the cause okay the tra- the highway traffic is the cause and then because it's also an inference we're using evidence there was heavy traffic on the highway this morning and that's that all right so now we gotta do the next one I I I hope everyone is following this okay because it'd be good to know this kind of stuff up next we have Anya studies all the time so she must be a good student so in this sense we are presented with the connector and we're also presented with the must be okay as we said before if you see must be it's a reason okay so when you have a reasoning you have inference are we using evidence no because the evidence is in sentence one therefore this is what we're concluding so when we make the structured paraphrase it'll look like this Anya studies all the time conclusion she is a good student now keep in mind that a structured paraphrase does not have to be logically accurate there could be people who study for twenty hours a day because they're on sleeping anti-sleeping meds for some reason and still get bad grades maybe the insomnia got to them I don't know sorry for that I just took a sip of my drink let's continue and that is how you do the the structured paraphrase however what if I move the must be let me explain what if I move it so that it looks like this Anya must be a good student because she studies all the time well you see Anya must be a good student is our reasoning because of the connector and then info bit two she studies all the time is our evidence okay therefore when we do the structured paraphrase of this one we'll do Anya Anya is a good student because for some reason the term must be is considered fluff I don't know why but it is therefore after that good student we do the thing here and since we said that because she studies all the time is our evidence she studies all the time and remember the reason we know it's evidence because we're inferring something using the word because so we're explaining something at the same time though you would think that would make it a a an explanation however because there is a must be it becomes an inference and for the structured paraphrase Anya is a good student evidence she studies all the time good next one Matsuka Sato got sick because she ate the salt okay what is the thing okay so first because is our connector so that means that info bit one is Matsukasa Sato got sick info bit two she ate the salt so it'd be uh we can get rid of the last name because I I don't think we need that we let's just write Sato got sick if if you're doing it on the exam just write the full name and then the second section is she ate salt so she ate the salt is our evidence for why she got sick if it was uh Sato ate salt therefore she got sick that's uh that's a conclusion that's a bit different so it wouldn't be so it's evidence here and the reason we know it's evidence because we're inferring that it's because she ate the salt there's no actual statement saying that salt makes you sick so she ate the salt and that's how you would do that one up next uh you have a fever and a cough you should probably stay inside well probably involves a a reason therefore we're inferring meaning that it's either an evidence or a conclusion however the first statement you have a fever and a cough are the are the primary info bit so that means that we have to come up with a conclusion that would be the evidence but the conclusion is what should you do if you're sick you should stay inside and that is how you do that one there are three more here and then we'll move on to schematicization no schematicization I don't know why I added the extra z I think this makes sense I hope this makes sense I hope other people join so that I have an idea whether or not it does or doesn't make sense all right so the next one will be Jack and Jill went up the hill to fetch a pail of water but Jack fell down and cracked his crown and Jill came tumbling after good old nursery rhymes sometimes this sounds dark as hell but it's also cute in a way okay that that sounds really bad uh but ignore that so in this case we have two independent primary info bits so let's look at info bit one Jack and Jill went up the hill that's it two is a connector so Jack and Jill went up the hill your connector is to fetch a pail of water that would be a cause because that's what they're trying to do it's the explanation at one point I thought it was effect but the effect is they go up the hill the cause of them going up the hill is they did that to fetch a pail of water there you go however there's a second one because Jack fell down is the second one the reason it's not another layer is because there is no place to make a second layer okay you can't get Jack fell down from Jack and Jill went up the hill logically as a structured paraphrase at least not in a way that I can think of and it's possible you can't even get it in a way that the professor thought of or the teachers didn't thought of because that's not how we do it they Jack fell down so the second thing is what is it uh Jack cracked his crown so Jack falling down the effect of falling down is that Jack carried his crown now here's the thing Jill came tumbling after now we would think of that as that has to be caused by something it could be a third primary but no it's not a third primary info bit it's actually fluff because nothing actually was an explanation or an inference to explain why Jack fell down it just so happens that on her own time Jill came tumbling after okay so that's how you would do the structured paraphrase of this one and in some cases you might even just want to get rid of the space and have it written like this but it could be con- concluded that it's one line so I make the little space there just so you guys know it's two different primary info bits so up next we have this one it's a bit of a harder one but sure Ahmit must have walked to work his car didn't start this morning because this morning because it was out of fuel and he lives close to the office now okay he used to take a bus to work from his old flat which was further away awesome just amazing in all honesty oh we might just a very might get joined by Panini head who knows who knows indeed but I don't know maybe maybe Panini head won't join after all who knows but that is our big statement so now we have to do a structured paraphrase normally I just did them all gung ho but there is a step that I was kind of skipping because it's a waste of time if you guys are able to discern it but this is a more complicated text so I have to do this you have to list bits of information so we have to list the info bits why does info bit sound like an edgy anime huh it really does whatever uh so the info bits are Amit must have walked to work his car didn't start this morning his car was out of fuel he lives close to the office now he used to take a bus to work from his old flat which was farther away and that's it for him good so now we have the info bits let's paraphrase statement one is Amit must have walked to work normally I would omit the must have however the truth is that we don't admit it because it's the primary info bit if it wasn't then we would admit it but we don't now why must he have walked to work well we have something there his car didn't start this morning that is our evidence however because it is using the term because it's not just an explanation it could also be I mean it's not just an inference it could also be an explanation and so the evidence that we are given is that his car didn't start this morning but it's also the cause okay his car didn't start this morning that caused that caused him to not get there so cause his car didn't start this morning I see says the blind man I really do so then you gotta think about this the next statement is why didn't his car start this morning his car was out of fuel you see if it was his car was out of fuel because it didn't start the morning then it would be that be evidence but however because his car was out of fuel came after the term his car didn't start in the morning it's a cause his car was out of fuel and then after that we need something else he lives close to the office now which is evidence here evidence Amit must have walked to work evidence is he lives close to the office now and that's how you would do the structured paraphrase for this one and you don't actually have to indent it this far it's just that when you're writing out by hand you do that and that is how you get this that's the structured paraphrase for Amit must have walked to work his card didn't start this morning because it was out of fuel and he lives close to the office now he used to take a bus to work from his old flat which is further away and that's how you would paraphrase it under structures and it seems that Panini is not joining us how sad and for the last structured paraphrase for quite a while I will add is this one slightly dark one night time oh no we can't say this word on Minecraft now because it's offensive gunfire in our neighborhood increased during the late eighties so we damn it the late eighties so we moved out of the city I heard gunfire three times this week so our neighborhood must be getting more dangerous so far so good the neighbors aren't worried yeah I bet they're strapped but I am since things seem to be getting more dangerous here we'll likely move out soon okay so this is a pretty hard one as well okay this is probably gonna be the hardest kind of structured paraphrasing though so if you can get this one you can get all of them although I will admit structured paraphrasing has some of the lowest amount of rules I've ever seen for an assignment still not as bad as what is called schematicization but we'll get to schematicization that has next to no rules I tell you it doesn't even make sense half the time but after schematicization it gets it becomes fun okay when we get to logic it becomes great but first to do this we need to do the thing here list out information well actually no we don't okay I think that we can figure this out night time gunfire in our neighborhood increased okay the whole during the late eighties is fluff you don't need it I guess you could keep it in but you don't need it what does that do it has an effect on us the effect is we moved out of the city out of the city. Okay? Then we have a second one. I heard gunfire three times this week. Okay? That's our second primary info bit. Good. So what do we do? So we conclude that the, the neighborhood is getting more dangerous. Okay, I might even have to take the word nay out of it. Well, the prefix nay, but you get the point. And bore, you know, the word neighbor out of it. Okay, the hood is getting more dangerous. I'm kidding, I'm kidding. Don't actually do that. And our conclusion is, but it's also an effect, by the way. Is that we'll move out soon. Now. Here's the thing. First, we gotta cut some things out. Likely is fluff. This is just to show you how I got there. Since is fluff. So is the connector. And so above here is also the connector. So this so and this so are connectors. Info bit one and info bit two. And that is how we get that. I, I know it says to list out the bits of information, but the truth is, you don't need it, okay? If it's, this one's a bit more complicated, but this one you can just kind of gung ho it if you already did the listing out. And you'd be kind of redundant and watch me flip it out through it multiple times. So now that we have that, let's move on to what I believe is the most difficult part of this, of this class. Schematization, okay? Schematization is brutal. It is super hard, but I believe in all of you. You can all solve it. You have to. So schematization is about rephrasing sentences. Okay? Some of the forms of if A then B include the following. B if A. A only if B. Provided, given, assuming A, B. And of course, B provided slash given slash assuming A. There we go. So let me note the difference. Let's say, I have this text originally. If I don't want to okay, right here. Okay, so if I don't want to go to the store, I don't need to take the bike out. Period. I can buy milk provided I go to the store. It is not true that I don't need to get milk. So I should get the bike out. So let's rephrase that, so that we don't need to type that much, or in our case, write so much. So I always say, have a pen and pencil with you, so you can follow along and take notes. So let's look at the difference once we actually rebrand everything using the above rules of rephrasing sentences. If I get the bike out, comma, I can go to the store. If I go to the store, I can buy milk. I need to get some milk. Apparently, we're on WorldStar Hip Hop. So I should get the bike out. Awesome. See how much less that is? Okay, and honestly, it's honestly not that much less. But if it saves you time and makes the arguments, or in this case, the passage easier to decipher, then rephrasing using these forms will save you a lot of time and energy. Let's look at some examples. The economy seems to be recovering. Perhaps it will be easier to get a job this year. Okay? So first, we need to start paraphrasing. Schematization, so premise one of this is that the economy seems to be recovering. Okay? Premise two, typically you'll put them in in parentheses like this. But you don't need to, okay? You really don't need to. Cona, if economy is recovering, then it is easier to get a job. That is our second premise. So we can conclude after writing a line. You know what? We'll do this correctly. Oh, come on. Control zero one five, oh shit. Alt zero one five one. No? Fine. You don't want to be nice? You won't be nice then. So we conclude with this. It will be easier to get a job this year. And that's a simple way to do it. Okay? I know it's more lines and more steps, but what it does is let us schematize the arguments provided in the passage to make it flow much more efficiently. Okay, it makes the argument clear. However, sometimes you're going to need to paraphrase or infer some things. Okay, you need to identify missing premises. For example, we have this one. Maybe the economy will recover now that the new bill has passed. So premise one is the new bill has passed. And we know that the conclusion is that the economy will recover. How do we get there? Well, you see, the implicit premise, okay, the missing premise is the new bill will recover the economy. So if you want to get really good at this, pretend to be a Shika Triche believer, and you'll be able to solve it. Now let's do a harder one, okay? Let's do a really hard one of these. Ah, yes, we'll do seven and eight from this one. How hard is it? Nah, these won't be too difficult. These will be moderately challenging at best. I believe in it. I believe in all of you. I really do. I have faith in all of your skills and tactics and talents. So this one is here. Can there be any doubt that anyone who is happy must have their basic needs met? And who, if not the government, is best placed to organize the institutions and policies to ensure that at least the basic needs are met. I might go so far as to say that in fact it is the government's duty to maximize happiness in society. So the government should help the people meet their basic needs. First of all, this guy obviously is a welfare. Is a welfare, you know, prick. And also, okay, so this guy's a leech. And also, it is not the government's duty to maximize happiness. In fact, your founding documents in the country, United States of America, is you have the right to pursue it. Not that you have the right to it. Different things, okay? And also, happiness is not given to you by having your basic needs met. As the Mauzutopia experiment has proven, happiness is given when you achieve something. But that's not the point why we're here. Let's get into schematizing this thing. So first, we have premise one. Everyone who is happy has their basic needs met. Simple enough. Premise two. The government is best placed to ensure that at least, now you know what? Ensure that the basic needs are met, okay? You know what? Let's put at least. Because it makes it easier to fix this, that at least basic needs are met. And then premise three. It is the government's duty to maximize happiness. Okay? So we have the, all the premises given to us. But there's no real okay, actually, there it is. This is actually a really easy one. I don't know why I thought this would be a harder one. Never mind. This one's actually super easy. And it's practically a gimme. The government should help people meet their basic needs. Okay? So all I did was paraphrase it. I didn't even look for anything implicit. I'm so sorry. Maybe the next one is better by something. Okay, okay. The next one is going to be really hard comparatively to what we have done prior. I, this was just, my apologies. Let's do an actual hard one. Fire department investigators suspect that the warehouse blaze was intentionally set since nothing stored there was particularly flammable. Alright. But the fire spread unusually quickly. As though aided by something. Alright, that one's honestly simple looking, but it's deceptive. This one actually is pretty sneaky there, okay? Premise one, what's premise one, guys? Premise one is that nothing stored at the warehouse was particularly flammable. Alright, what's premise two? And it's that the fire spread unusually quickly. Alright, nothing too bad just yet. Let me get a sip of my drink to make sure that everything is going well. Okay? Premise three. Is, it is the, oh. I was looking at the previous question. The fire could have spread so quickly only if it was either aided by something flammable in the store or was inten- or was intentionally set. Awesome. So that's that. But now, what is our conclusion? Well, you see, now that we have P three telling us something, you know, a new bit of information, we can get that the conclusion is the warehouse blaze was intentionally set. And the reason we get that is logic, okay? The blaze was intentionally set. That's what they suspect. Nothing stored there was flammable, okay? Fire could only spread so quickly if it was either aided by something flammable in the store or was intentionally set. But since nothing was flammable, it was intentionally set. And the reason we know this is because it was particularly quickly. But at the same time, we know P one states that nothing was particularly flammable. Therefore, this is the correct way to do it. This is a pretty hard one, okay? But if you guys can figure that out, you're good, okay? You will be good for the exam. Okay, okay. This one is just really hard. Okay, this is probably the hardest stuff. So now we're doing sub-arguments. And sub-arguments are the bane of my existence because they're needlessly hard for some reason. Let's do it. Come on, Holmes. We got this. Investigators speculated Saturday, the de-icing aid uh, boot fell off because forty-three screws were missing from the leading edge of the plane stabilizer. Where the de-icer would have been attached thus the sudden loss of the de-icer would stall. Okay? The tail and cause the plane to nosedive, Kohlstad said at the press meeting briefing on the crash. It was found out about three quarter of a mile northeast okay, of the crash site, okay? This is from the Associated Press. Now that we have, uh, let's begin. Let's begin formatting it, okay? So we gotta do, we gotta format it. How do we format? I guess no one's joining us. That's fine. Well, P one, premise one is this. De-icer fell off. Oh, de-icer boot fell off. That's premise one. Premise two is de-icer falling off causes plane to crash. And we're going to add this little detail, nosedive. Because a nosedive can mean a lot of things depending on the context. Sometimes it's someone just leaning forward with their nose and tapping you on the forehead or on your nose. Like an Eskimo. That's just the point. We're gonna say it nosedived to give you the exact connotation, but it really means that the plane crashed. And then from there, our conclusion is that the plane crashes. If the de-icer fell off, then the plane crashes. If A then B, A therefore B. However, there's a sub-argument here. Sub-premise one is de-icer was found three fourths of a mile from the crash site. Sub-premise two is that forty-three securing screws were missing. And in this instance, our sub-conclusion And in this instance, our sub-conclusion is the same as our first premise. This is why the de-icing boot fell off, because it was fa- we know that it was found there because forty-three screws were missing and we know where it was found. Otherwise, we could not prove that to be, otherwise, we would not know that to be true. Up next, cause of the four, that was probably the easiest one. These'll only get harder. But I promise you, we will succeed in this. Is there an absolute measurement to determine wealth? Relative to Americans, I suppose I am poor. Americans have quite a high demand standard of living relative to Afghanistan. However, I am living it up. Exclamation point. If I lived in Afghanistan, I would likely not even have electricity. Only six percent of their population have access to electricity. I don't know where my professor got that statistic from. There is no way that is correct. Whereas I have TV and internet. I suppose it just goes to show you that measurements for wealth are relative to where you are, okay? Arguably speaking, is the hardest one because it has sub-sub conclusions. In a sense, it's a sub-conclusion within a sub-conclusion. It's inception, but with logic puzzles. So first, let's get the premises. P one. Relative to America, I am poor. I know, I'm very poor. I have six thousand annual salary. Not sixty, no, six. I am literally paid bit, well, far below the poverty line and far below minimum wage. It's crazy. Okay, so I'm obviously joking about my actual wages, but I am underpaid. I'm still paid above minimum wage, it's just, I was joking about the six thousand annually. We'd be, I'd be dead. I live in California, for gosh's sake. And I'm a university student, that would be absolutely terrible. Relative to Afghanistan, I am rich. So what does that really mean? Well, we gotta get to the conclusion, okay? The conclusion is measurements of wealth change depending on where you are. So normally, if we were just doing set schematization and not doing anything else, we would be done. However, we're schematizing sub-arguments. SP one says only, oops. If I lived in Afghanistan, I would likely not have electricity. SP two says I have electricity in the United States. And SP three says, and I'm not gonna say this, the United States of America. No, the United States is, is the US of A. Okay, so if I say America, I mean the country, not the continent. I, I really hope I don't have to explain this, but just in case, okay, just in case, cause there's gonna be one guy who says, uh, you actually forgot the fourth subs- uh, sub-premise that United States equals America. Fine. There, I'll say it out loud, I'm not typing it. Cause that should be obvious. If I had electricity in Afghanistan, I would be rich, okay? If that is the case, then our sub-conclusion is equal to premise two. Relative to Afghanistan, I am rich. Bowler. Okay, baller, that's how you do it. And you would think we're done. No, 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 no. We're not. You see, the term, if I lived in Afghanistan, I would likely not have electricity, is something I needed to state. So sub-sub premise one is only six percent of Afghanistan population has access to elec- tricity. So finally, okay, so finally, not only is George Bush finally out of office, but I'm finally free of this one. SSC, or sub-sub conclusion, is equal to sub-premise one. If I lived in Afghanistan, I would likely not have electricity. And that is how you schematicize a sub-sub argument. We have two more examples for just sub-arguments. Trust me, we will get there. See, this is why we have the art in the middle, so I can keep my sanity from how borderline incoherent these assignments are. And it's true, it's not even that they're super duper hard. It's that you have to reach, okay? Like I said, you have to be a sheka tuche, a believer, to do these, to understand these. Okay, roast tuche people, I'm sorry, but you're kinda screwed. Shuttle's external fuel. And I'm an asimut riche, I'm joking, I'm joking. There are a few people out there like, what the hell is he talking about? Whatever. Shuttle, oh, I have to actually read the text again, just get into the paraphrasing. Space shuttle technicians believe tomorrow's launch should be delayed. Yesterday's hailstorm was so intense that it broke greenhouse windows and damaged cars in nearby parking lots. So it may easily have also damaged the insulation covering the shuttle's external fuel tank. The kind of inspection possible at the launch site would not be able to ensure the integrity of the covers. Even if it detected nothing. Adequate inspection would require returning the shuttle to its hunger. Which, okay? Would take more than a week and launching and launching with damaged fuel tank insulation would risk catastrophe. Okay, let me crack my wrist really quickly because darn. So you guys see this? Now, read this again if you have to. Pause the video or something. Three, two, one, okay. It's being paraphrasing. Premise number one is that shuttle's external fuel tank is damaged. Hold on, I forgot to put the apostrophe, there we go. The second premise is that the shuttle's external fuel, uh, da, at launching with damaged fuel tank insulation would risk catastrophe. And premise three, because we gotta have many premises apparently, you actually don't, you only need one, but we have more, the arguments more sense. Adequate inspection would take a week. There we go. So with that, with all three of these premises, what can we conclude? We can conclude that tomorrow's launch should be delayed. Awesome. Hardest part of the class right here. How do we know that? Well, you see, let's look at some sub-arguments. Sub-premise one is that yesterday's hailstorm was intense. Sub-premise two, the kind of inspection possible at the launch site would not be able to ensure integrity of the cover. And this includes if it detected nothing, but that's not, that's, that's fluff. And sub-premise three is that hailstorm could have caused intern- external exter- wait, so intense that it broke greenhouse windows and damaged cars in nearby parking lots, insulation covering, external fuel tank, okay? I had to reread the thing, just to make sure I was right, alright. And from there, we can conclude that sub-conclusion is equal to premise one. That even if you were able to detect it hypothetically for the sake of argument. Did I click insert somewhere? I did. Okay, yeah, I did. Okay, so back to what we were doing. External fuel tank equals premise one. And that is how the shuttle's internal fuel tank is damaged. There's one more. But honestly, okay, it's practice for how you can have multiple sub-premises within an argument. So let me explain. This one is kinda relevant. Darn it, it's relevant. But it's okay, okay? As long as you know it, you can get through it. Where is the stock market headed? Some think we are in the middle of a sustained ball market. My view is that the stock market prices will go down this coming quarter because if interest rates go up, stock market prices will go down. And the Federal Reserve has indicated that interest rates will rise. Awesome. Good. So now, let's schematize this nightmare. P one. What is premise one? Premise one is that interest rates will rise. Premise two is that if interest rates rise, stock market prices will fall. From there, we can get a conclusion. And that is that stock market prices will fall this coming quarter, okay? So far, so good, I think. Hey, I, I, I really hope I think about this, okay? SP one is the Federal Reserve has indicated that interest rates will rise, okay? And from that statement, we can get the sub-conclusion is equal to premise one. Okay, the interest rates will rise. Cause if the Federal Reserve indicates that it will rise, then it will rise. That's what we get from the conclusion. Anyways, bring back my two thousands waifus, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. The question asks us, at the very end of the answer, the question asks us is now, how would the schematization change? If we add these sentences, in twenty seventeen, increased interest rates caused the stock market to go down. And not much has changed since then, to expect anything different now. Well, you see, our sub-argument, we would get a new sub-argument, one for premise two. So let's keep this the same, because honestly, this would stay the same. But now we get a new thing. SP one is this, in twenty seventeen, increased interest rates caused the stock market to go down. Oh, I, I figured I should write what I was talking about. How would schematization change if we added these sentences? Twenty seventeen, increased interest rates caused the stock market to go down. And not much has changed since then to expect anything different now. Okay, so when you add these two statements, you realize you get a new set of SPs. Go down and SP two is not much has changed to ex- since then to expect anything different now. Okay, and from there, we can conclude this, and it's that SC is equal to premise two. And that is how you get the addition. Schematization changes because you have a new sub-premise. Makes sense? Good. Oh, happy day, oh, happy day. We finished the hardest part of the class. Time to the fun stuff of the class, guys. This is the stuff that makes a lot of sense. I hope. Cause honestly, this is the easier, this is not the easier part, but it's the more logical part. If you're a, you're a mathematician at heart, you'll love this next section. So the following section is significantly longer, but at the same time, follows a more coherent set of rules. And to prove it to you, I've written these rules down in the background. First, I'll delete the non-relative rules. Oh, happy day, oh, happy day. I don't know. Do you guys like this? Ah, shoot, I didn't mean to do that, uh, if. Yay, okay. We can now get rid of the label stuff, because honestly, it was cluttering the screen a bit too much even for my taste. And you guys know I clutter the screen like a madman sometimes. You know what? Let's get a nice color. Let's get this nice blue sky color here. And once more, we return to the very nice purple color here. And here is my statement nineteen nineties. Hello? To two thousand and and fourteen, oops. Were best years. Once more, I recommend you watch these videos at times too speed for the sake of, you know, keeping up. We can get rid of all this. Time for famous form for practice. So what we do is we get a passage and we schematize it. The difference is that we're trying to see if the argument is deductive, and we're going to give the logical steps to get the deductive's conclusion. There are five of these, first of all, and then there's another set afterwards. The rules are written here on the page. So let's, let's do this. If it's, if it's getting dark, then we won't be able to see. If we don't see, if we won't be able to see, then either we should okay. Make a fire or go home now. It's getting dark, so we should either make a fire or we should go home now. Alright, so step one, label each, uh, claim, what are they called? Label each variable A, B, C, D. So A, okay, uh, those of you guys who are taking logic in high school or who took logic at the community college, you're gonna love this. It's getting dark. B, we won't be able to see. C, we should make a fire. And D, we should go home now. Awesome. That's the hardest part, okay? Honestly, if you can give me the variables, you've done the hardest part. Now let's go to the easy stuff. Premise one is if A, then B. And that's your premise. Premise two is if B, then C. That's your premise. And your conclusion, uh, conclusion therefore either C or D. Is that really how it's written? Oh, wait, no, no. And either C or D. Oops, I was looking at the second one, my bad. If B, then either C or D. That's your premise. And then premise three is A. Therefore, by the way, the colon period means therefore, just so you guys are curious. Either C or D. And this A here is also a premise. Okay? So what can we conclude from this exactly? We can conclude a lot. But first, you gotta get to a step. Step one, if A, then either C or D. And we get that through premise one, premise two, and HS. Now, the rule of HS, by the way, is if premise one is if A, then B, and premise two is if B, then C, then premise C, then the conclusion is if A, then C. And that is how we get that. So now that we have that, we can get the true conclusion. Oh, what? Uh, red. If, if, which is step two, and the final step for this one, either C or D. And you'll get that through step one and premise three. And the rule we used is modus ponens, or, or MP. Because if, if A, then B, and then A happens to be true, then B is true. That's, that's the rule on the top left. So in this case, if A, then B, then B, then C will give us HS. So then, if A, then C or D, and then happens that A is true, so P3 and S1, we get C or D is our conclusion. Fun, actually fun, holy crud. If Rashida hears loud music, then either her neighbor is up late or there's a car going by. She hears loud music and there isn't a car going by. So her neighbor is up late. It's a beautiful day in the neighborhood, a beautiful day for a neighbor. Would you be mine? Could you be mine? It's sad that nobody joined the review session. Oh, well, is there a loss, I guess? Nothing off my back. So first, we gotta schematize this. First, what are our, what are our ABCs here? Rashida hears loud music. You know, I'm gonna look it up. Where is the name Rashida from? Rashida country of origin. It's Arabic, meaning righteous, wise, knows her own way, mature, and of true faith. So it's a female name. Cool. From a Swahili word meaning righteous. Cool. Well, at least it means something good. B is her neighbor is up late. And C, there's a car going by. Okay, is it Sonic Racing Chris's uncle, I believe it was his uncle in the show? Maybe that's the car that's going by, because that car was pretty loud, just saying. So now that we have that, let's start setting it up. How is it phrased here? If Rashida hears loud music, then either her neighbor is up late or there's a car going by. Therefore, it is P1 is if A, then either C or B. Up next, P2. A, that's a given. P3. Not C. N O T, space, C. Premise, therefore, B. What can we conclude from this? Well, S1 is either B or C. And I get this from this. P1, P2, and you use MP rule, okay? If A, then B, if A is true, then B. So in this case, if A, then either B or C, A is given, so it's either B or C. Wonderful. Step two is the following, B. And we get it because it says not C. Okay? Let me pull it up. Where's MP? Yeah, MP. If A, no, my bad, it's DS, DS, DS. DS is here. Either A or B, not A, it's B. P1, P2, DS, that's the rule. So in a sense, B because it says not C. So we're getting it from premise three and step one, and that is DS. Because DS rule is bottom left. Awesome. These are going to take quite a while. DS MP was already given, so we're gonna skip. We're going to skip number three and do four and five. Number three should be really easy. Four and five are going to give us goosebumps, and we'll do five first and do four after. Although, it doesn't really matter what order is for you guys. Because you're not, probably not looking at the paper, you probably just have a pen and a notebook or something, which is good, that's what I prefer. Jordan is being rude either because he had a bad day or because it was his personality. If he did it because he had a bad day, then he wouldn't do this all the time. But he does do it all the time. So he's doing it because it's his personality. Alright, ladies and gentlemen, alright. See, this is why I chose Aria Holmes, because only she could logic her way through this crap. A, he had a bad day. He being Jordan. B, it was his personality. And C, he does it all the time. Great. So now that we have that, let's phrase it, either A or B. Either he had a bad day, or it was his personality. So premise one is either A or B. And that's your premise. Premise two is if A, then C. That's a premise. And then premise three is not, space, C. Great. And that's a therefore B kind of statement. So now we have that, let's start step one. Is not A. And we get not A from the MT rule. Okay? So in a sense, if A, then B, so P2. And not B, so in our case, P3, then MT. And let's put these in parentheses, because that's how the professor makes it on the assignment, okay? And then S2, we can get from that that it's B. And the reason we can do it is because if we look at at number one, premises one is either A or B, but since we know it's not A, given by step one, MP, oh my god, maybe DS. Because DS is, uh, either A or B, and then not A gives us CD, gives us BDS. There's no M there, by the way, so don't worry about that. So it'll be not A, is given to us by premise two and premise three, and MT, which is the rule, remember it as a rule. And then S2 is a B because P1, S1 tell it so, therefore it's DS, because it's DS rule. You can, it's easier to memorize the rules as long as you're looking at the paper assignment. So if it's like this, memorizing the rule is easy, okay? And then finally, for the hardest one, if Ling goes out, she won't wear a mask, okay? Uh, you know what? Let's make it funny. She won't wear a top. And if she won't wear a top, she will either avoid people or she will get arrested uh, for indecent exposure. She never avoids people properly and she's going out. So she's going to be arrested. There we go. That's more fun, because either one, the one that's actually given on the worksheet is kinda depressing. So we gotta get the ones, okay? A is Ling goes out. B is she won't wear a top. C is she will avoid people properly. And D is she will get arrested. Okay? So now, let's do this one correctly. So P1, if A, then B, and that's our premise. P2 is if B, then either C or D, which you're getting from the statements here. And that's your premise again. Premise three is not C, not, space, C. And then premise four is A. Premise therefore D. Therefore, D. Is that correct? Yes, 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 yes it is. Okay. So now that we have that, let's get on to this one. And, and yes, this is partially a Hidana Aria joke, so get used to it. But I won't say what I'm referencing, because it's not technically directly accurate, you just have to infer it, ha, ha, get it? I know, it's not funny, but still, get used to it. If A, then either C or D. And we get that from the premise one, which states if A, then B. We get it from premise two, which states if B, then C. And that is HS form. The HS rule is if A, then B. Per- premise two is if B, then C, and premise, then the conclusion is if A, then C. That's where we get that from. The next step is either C or D, which we get from step one. We, well, actually, no, let me see, let me see, let me see, let me see, let me see. We get it from premise three, which is not C. Wait a minute. We get it from premise four, premise four. We get it from premise four because if A, and A is true, and we get it from step one as well, which is if A, then either C or D. Okay, so S1 was correct earlier. I guess I was just overthinking it. And that is modus ponens, as in it's the if A, then B, A, then B. Therefore, B. Top left rule. And then from there, we have step three, which is D. And we know it's D because premise three states not C. And we know it's D because premise three states not C. Well, not space C. And step two states it's either C or D. And that is DS, because that's the DS rule. Either A or B, not A, therefore, therefore B. And that is how you get a deductive argument. This is the famous forms practice. That's everything. That's every handout. That's all the notes. I want to thank you all so much for watching, and I hope you all enjoyed.